Call this meeting order will stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 3, 2017. We will move into the consent agenda where we have approval of payroll for September 20, 2017. Approval of claims, September 21 and September 28, 2017. Treasurer's monthly reports, June 30 and July 31, 2017. We also have Memorial Opera House. Should we do that separately or can we do it all in one? We can do it all in one, right? Both those. Yeah. Well, we have, under Memorial Opera House, we have Tom Lounges Humane Society of Northwest Indiana. That's a venue rental agreement. It's a nonprofit. And then we have the American Society of Composers, which is a theater license agreement. That's all in the consent agenda. I'll open the floor. Do we have a motion for consent agenda?
No moves.
Second. We have a motion and a second for consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business under commissioners. We have an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund, number 4007, for receipt of animal shelter fees paid by municipalities for the Porter County Animal Shelter. This is second reading. I'll open the floor to the board.
Motion to approve.
I just have one thing to add of the, due to the recent changes or the recent agreement at the foundation level. This name, the name of this fund was amended from Foundation Erdings Fund to Foundation Holdings Fund or Holding Fund. It's no other significant changes except that it's not the earnings fund, it's the holding fund.
Is that the non-reverting 400?
Yes.
So it's the holding fund.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
You know, I think I, I think I just messed everybody up. I was on five and six and we were doing the animal shelter.
Yeah, that's right. I was a little confused there.
Yeah, I jumped down too soon.
All right.
So.
So it's still the non-reverting fund, number 4007?
Correct.
Okay. Next, we will move into, what else? What happened?
I made sure my coffee didn't have anything on it.
Oh, missed that one. Kurt Ellis Independent Contractor Agreement Termination. For those in the audience, Kurt Ellis has been an independent contractor for the county for quite a few years. Doing a lot of different things for the county with regards to website, social media, a lot of other fill-in PR-related writing, marketing-type functions. And we have, the Board of Commissioners have made a decision to hire Kurt. We had an open position in our office that was advertised and we held on to that open position. And we are basically just filling that position. So we're basically getting rid of a contractor and hiring an employee. And most of the job responsibilities that he had as a contractor will still be the same, but we will be piling on quite a few other things on top of that for Kurt to do. So we welcome him, but part of welcoming him to the team is that we have to terminate his agreement. So I will open up the floor to the board for any comments, questions, or what have you.
Motion to terminate the agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to terminate independent contractor agreement of Kurt Ellis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a proposal from Shive Hatterley Architects for the Porter County Administration Center Expansion Study. Shive Hatterley is a local architectural firm based here in Valparaiso. They were previously known as design organization. And we have an agreement here for, I believe, is it $32,000? Proposal up here. Yeah, the proposal is for $31,200. And what this will be, this is somewhat of a kickoff for our capital improvement plan that was approved last week. What Shive Hatterley will be doing, this is a limited scope contract, and what they will be doing is they will be doing a needs assessment for space with all of our buildings, which includes this building, the courthouse, and any buildings that are outside of this building within the city of Valparaiso here. So what they will be doing is putting a recommendation together for space planning, so then we can then determine the needs we need from that point that we can then apply to the addition of this building here that we're doing. So this is first step, very preliminary, but it needs to be done before we do some of the other things that we need to do. So we're just trying to do it in conjunction. So this is the purpose of this contract. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Porter County Administration Center Expansion Study for Shive Hatterley and the amount of $31,200. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the list is KDIC Contract for Project Description Services. Scott, why don't you lead us off on that?
This is the second step of the consultant we have working on our insurance for the work comp and the property casualty, the auto, et cetera. This would be the second step. This would be, they've developed a plan. The plan has been reviewed by the commissioners. Part of this would be approving that plan moving forward. It's part of what we need and then also their project description and contract for the next phase in this process, which would be to bid out all of those things through our consultant.
Do we have any other questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract for, I believe this is the second part of the contract too, right?
Yes, the contract and their recommendations on the plan moving forward.
Right, yeah. So for KDIC, our consultant that is working with the Board of Commissioners on the property and casualty insurance for Porter County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're going to move into an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of earnings of the Porter County Government Nonprofit Charitable Foundation. This is the holding account and this is second reading.
This is the ordinance that I amended to holding account.
It's almost like the third reading.
Yeah. Well, we're from the council. We're used to the third and fourth readings.
Any other questions for the board? I'll open up the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of earnings of the Porter County Government Nonprofit Charitable Foundation. Called the holding account. This is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of earnings of the Porter County Government Nonprofit Charitable Foundation. This is the budget account. This is another fund that we're creating, which is called budget account. And this is the first reading. So with that, I will recess the commissioners' meeting, open it up into a public meeting. All of those, we will give three opportunities to speak in favor of this ordinance and we will give three opportunities to speak against this ordinance. We will open up first with anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance. Please, you have the opportunity to come up and address the board. First call. We have a second call for anybody wanting to come forward and address this body and against this ordinance. And we have third and final time, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance, please come forward. We will now move over to anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance. Please come forward. Second call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come forward. Third and final time, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Please come forward. And with that, we will close the public hearing. We will now resume back to the Board of Commissioners. I will open it up to the floor to any of the board members that have anything to say about this ordinance.
Just, I'd like to ask Scott to give a Reader's Digest version of the purpose of this, of this fund and its, how it'll be used. The holding, the first one, the second reading on the holding account is where the earnings that are determined at the year end of any given year from the foundation would be transferred by resolution of the foundation to that holding account, bringing that money from the foundation to a government, a local government-controlled fund and account. The second, budget fund would be, or budget account would be after a second resolution from the foundation, moving some certain from the holding account to the budget account. Would then move the money to the budget account, which would then allow the council to proceed in their normal course of budgeting, appropriating money into that budget account through the normal processes that we're all used to. So basically, we just have the two funds. Holding for the total amount of earnings and the budget account is how much the foundation transfers by resolution to the budget account that should then be used by the council for budgetary purposes.
And those funds will only be, those funds created through the interest of the investments of the principal, correct?
Correct.
And at no time will the principal be held within this fund?
Not, not, I mean, correct.
Okay.
I guess the.
Still 10 feet.
Yeah, the only answer would be unless all 10 of you vote to do that.
Right. Any other questions for the board? Thank you, Scott. I believe the council has been moving.
They had their first reading.
They had their first reading on this last night. So this is coming together rather nicely. So with that, I'll open up the floor for first reading for the board.
Motion to approve and first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second for first reading on an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of earnings of the Porter County Government Nonprofit Charitable Foundation called Budget Account. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a request for an additional appropriation fund, 1112, in the amount $150,000 to account 4420 motor vehicles. These are for motor vehicles for the 911 and the EMA departments. As most, maybe some of you know, maybe some of you don't know, we have totally changed the total leadership at the 911 department and the EMA department. When the new folks came in to take over these departments, we found out that the automobiles in there were probably not very roadworthy. One of the vehicles was well over 200,000 miles on it. The other vehicle was just as bad shape. So we want to get these two departments upgraded immediately because these are first responders. And so we have been digging around into our budgets and trying to find money to get these two departments outfitted and this is the result of that. So that's sort of the Reader's Digest on the additional appropriation. Did I leave anything out?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that the vehicles, not only were they, they had in excess of miles on them, but the maintenance records were nonexistent, meaning that both of those vehicles had gone an excessive amount of miles without so much as an oil change. And, but that's why we tore down and rebuilt these agencies, so.
The management doesn't do that.
One thing I would add that this would be an additional request out of unallocated, ceded, to one of our ceded budgets to purchase the motor vehicles and that request has been completed by staff and put on the council agenda.
I would also like to just say before we vote on this, having all of us been involved in the new direction for 911 and EMA, we're about 30 days into this right now, but I can tell you that you will see a difference. You will see a new face on this and you will be seeing these two departments becoming much more relevant in the county than what they've been in the past. I think it's safe to say, coming off the day after Las Vegas, and a lot of things that this world is turning into a little bit different place. And I think our EMA and 911 responders, this needs to be taken much more seriously, even more than in the past. And so it's not about, for us, it's probably timing. It's something that we've been wanting to do for the last year and we worked hard behind the scenes to set this all up, to make this all happen. And now we're just in the ground game, trying to get everything set up for these two departments to excel. These two departments represent all of Porter County. They take 911 calls, 911 calls everywhere, cities, towns, everywhere. This is, this is a service that this county provides for every person that lives in this county, same way with EMA. There's no jurisdictional problems with cities or towns. This is 911. This is what we do. This is the backbone of county services. And I can tell you from my perspective, we're stepping up our game big time. So get ready. You're going to be hearing a lot more from us.
The EMA also is the, is the communication. Handles the communication with the Department of Homeland Security. So each individual county's emergency management agency handles that responsibility. And that's why it is so very important that EMA is properly managed and communicating as it should with our emergency communication system as well as all first responding agencies throughout our county. But, you know, with, with the tear down and rebuild of these agencies, it's, there's really no difference than what this board has been doing, you know, that I've seen over the last year and a half to two years. You know, whether it was the Highway Department, the Plan Commission, now it's EMA, 911, IT, and it's, it's, it's planning. Instead of being reactive, we're being active. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish here.
Well said. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Blaney?
I'm good.
All right. I'll open up the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve a request for an additional appropriation fund, 1112, in the amount of $150,000 to account 4420 motor vehicles. And these are motor vehicles for 911 and EMA. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will be back when we take these vehicles and get quotes. These vehicles, these will come back to this board and we will vote on the purchase of those as well, too. This is just setting up to move the money. Then we'll come back and we'll vote to buy the vehicles, make sure we're getting the best bang on the buck for the vehicles. Moving on to number eight, I've been advised by Attorney McClure that we are not ready for this one yet, so we would want to continue this. So I need a motion.
Motion to, what, table?
Continue, continue.
Motion to continue.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue. The Indiana Department of Transportation Local Public Agency Project Coordination Contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number nine, approving order and bond documents for the capital improvement project. Attorney McClure, could you give us the download on that?
Sure. This is the portion that the commissioners are responsible for in approving and signing that the council has already gone through for two readings and have approved unanimously. We have all of their signatures on this document. This is the ordinance for the Porter County Council and Commissioners authorizing the issuance of Porter County Revenue Bonds for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to the cost of the capital projects throughout the county and incidental expenses in connection therein. It is the $30 million capital improvement fund and this is the next step and the final time that the Board of Commissioners would have to take action. We just need a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as written and as adopted by the council at this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bond documents for the capital improvement project for the Porter County Capital Improvement Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, could we real quick, could you provide us the list of those projects just for the record?
Those projects would be the plaza out front, which we're doing now. We have three bridges, which had fallen below repair limit. And those three bridges, I don't have the numbers of bridges in front of me.
No, that's, that's just, but bridges.
But we have three bridges. We also have an upgrade to this building facility here with an addition. We also have an addition, the downtown courthouse, where we're going to be looking at exterior tuck painting, very large window program there, which the windows, a lot of you don't know, but a lot of the windows leak in that building very bad. And then once we get the outside figured out, we're going to be going in, taking a look at some of the space within the courthouse. As you all know, the courthouse is a historical building. Right now, we're probably over utilizing it as a historic building. Usually when you over utilize historic buildings, they tend to deteriorate a little bit faster. And I think since this is an, we felt that since this was the iconic building of Porter County, we needed to be better stewards and try to protect it and make it last longer. And that all falls into the study that we talked about and passed earlier of how we're going to take a look at, how we're going to move some different departments around, maybe take some heat out of that building, lighten the load over there, distribute it around this building a little bit more to where it all makes sense for those departments that are going to be utilizing it. The one thing I'd like to make clear is that the plan that we put into place, again, is once, it's not needs, it's needs, it's not once. And we're basically taking a look at, the planning that we're doing now is, you know, how can we plan our space needs for the next 20 years going forward? And that's sort of the plan and the mission that we're on. We also have the improvement of the North County Annex Building, which is in Portage. That would be a $10 million renovation to that building where we'll be adding courtrooms. We'll be bringing the assessor's office back into the building there. Or wait, they're already there. We're going to be bringing the health department back into that space, too. We'll also be doing a community room up there, too, for early voting because that's one of the other issues that we were looking at. And part of the space needs here is we really didn't, the last election, I think, with the number of people voting, I think it really showed that from an early voting perspective, this is sort of the way a lot of this is starting to go. And we need to better have more robust locations for early voting to where we can handle more people. And so part of these two plans in Portage Building and this building will be looking for some type of community room that we can put in both these facilities to, when the time comes, to handle early voting in a better way. So, did I, oh, and then the last one, she's, she's going to kill me if I don't say this. It was the Expo Center, right Lori? I almost forgot. Yeah, well, you wouldn't let us forget, but. And that's a building there that has been close in the county's history now for close to 30 years and we've not done anything to it since we built it 30 years ago. So I think it's time for some upgrades into that facility and make it more relevant. So I think I covered them there, Jim, Commissioner Biggs. And we have a lot of work ahead of us. We're very thankful to the council for unanimously approving this project in two readings. And we feel that the two boards have come together to move this county in the right direction. Again, this is needs, not wants. And this is basically a plan to where we've come out and we're taking care of four, three of our major buildings that haven't been touched for over 25 years. It's time. So that's what we're going to be doing. And again, this plan, I would be remiss not to say, but with the fortunate ability that we have with the foundation and now that it's earning money, we're able to pay for these bond payments based off of earnings of the foundation money. And we'll be able to do all this without raising property taxes on anybody. So we felt it was a good plan over 100 days ago and we feel it's just a good plan today. And so far, the constituents and the boards that vote on this all feel the same way, so here we go. So now, now comes the heavy lifting. So here we go. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Yep. Moving into Memorial Opera House, we have Scott McDonald. Come on forward, Scott. This is something that I know this office is pretty, we get, we get, we get excited about weird stuff up here, but I guess that's.
This is a long one.
I guess storm drainage is there, you know? We get excited about storm drainage. You know, not too many people get into that, but it's needed.
I don't know where he's going with that.
Yeah. But what this is, is go ahead and take us through it, Scott.
Sure.
Good morning, by the way.
Good morning, good morning. So this is a contract for commercial services agreements with Exquisite Draperies LLC for the fabrication and installation of new draperies and window treatments at the Opera House. Last year, our auditorium was painted and I know several of you have come through and we've looked at the window treatments and said, it's time. So to be able to move forward on this is very, very exciting for us, too.
And it comes at the perfect time?
Exactly.
125th anniversary.
125th anniversary next year. We've also, Memorial Opera House Foundation is going to be participating in this by providing funds. They've also purchased a new grand curtain for us. And because point of entry is something that's very important to me, we'll also be painting the lobby lounge and box office this year. So it's going to look really, really nice going into.
And how old was the grand curtain?
Oh, gosh, I would say at least 40 years old.
Yeah.
And it was beginning to tear. It's dry rotting. The velvet's really falling apart on it. So it's in rough shape, so it's time.
And the color you have chosen, which I think is going to be even cool, too?
It's called Midnight Blue.
Yeah.
So it's a dark, dark navy blue. And I think it's going to look really, really nice with the green in there and then the red seats and all of that. It's just going to elevate the space even more.
Good. That's definitely needed and want to thank the Memorial Opera House Foundation in splitting the costs with the commissioners here. Because we, as you all know, we all have a limited budget over there. But I think the foundation has been a great partner and a great advocate over there. And it's definitely a foundation that's very energetic and very engaged. So we thank them. Any, any questions from the board members?
Scott, just walk us through how you got your bids.
Yeah.
Sure. We reached out to three different groups. I reached out to Doling Contractors. I reached out to Tops in Crown Point. And we reached out to Kathy Kinder with Exquisite Draperies. Doling gave me a verbal quote and when I emailed them asking for an actual physical quote, we didn't hear from them again. And Tops, we just didn't hear that from. And Kathy has really pursued this through the entire thing, bringing fabric samples, templates and all of that, so.
Is that business local?
Exquisite Draperies, yes it is. She's on Knights Drive, I think, or Knight's Avenue in.
Well, that makes it easier.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Kathy Kinder Exquisite Draperies Commercial Services Agreement to provide fabrication and installation of new draperies for the Memorial Opera House Auditorium Lounge and Box Office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
And how are your ticket sales going? You know, every time you talk, you need to give us an update.
It's, it's absolutely insane right now for a Christmas story. Wednesday night, my box office attendant called me at home because she had done over $1,000 in ticket sales that evening and we were open for four hours. And she was like, I'm not sure if I'm doing the right thing.
Take the money.
Take the money. That's all I need you to do. But it was, it's very, very exciting. We sold several season ticket packages over the weekend with the closing of, you can't take it with you.
So you passed up last year?
We've passed up last year significantly by $5,000 already. And what's exciting, too, I was working averages yesterday and you can't take it with you. In the five years that we've been presenting straight plays, that averaged the highest ticket sales for a play. So I think we're finally starting to catch on with our season subscribers and all of that on those.
And if you're wanting to purchase tickets, where would you go to do that?
You can go to our website, to memorialoperahouse.com. You can also call the box office. Stacy will absolutely take care of you with that. And we're offering a discount through December 15th for the 125th anniversary, so.
For season.
For season subscriptions, yeah.
125 years, huh?
It's, it's exciting. It's very, very exciting to be around that long and to be serving our original purpose.
You don't look that old.
Well, thanks. Thanks, it's a good skincare regimen, you know. Some days I feel it.
I think this is kind of, the Opera House is one of the departments we kind of revamped first. And so, we're seeing the success now, and some of the other ones are more in their infancy stages of getting fixed up.
Yep, it's exciting. It's exciting to be a part of.
Good heart, good look into the future for other departments as well.
Keep leading.
Thank you, I intend to. Thank you.
Yeah.
Animal Shelter, Tony Bianchi. Come forward. This is an ordinance amending animal control code Title VI, Chapter 6.04.110. This is impoundment subsection 1E. This is the second reading. Are there any questions for the board?
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second, on second reading, to approve an ordinance amending animal control code Title VI, Chapter 6.04.110, impoundment. This is subsection 1E, and this is the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Just a little bit of narrative on this. As we continue to march forward with the new shelter, and with the new animal control being under the shelter, there are going to be times when we're going to have to amend control, to amend these documents and these ordinances that oversee the animal control. We ask cities and towns that are involved in this to please come forward if there's some things that need to be looked at, that need to be revised, that need to be discussed. This, this is sort of a new beginning for the animal shelter. So, as we develop our standards and as we develop this no-kill facility going forward, we're always going to be looking at these ordinances, and we're always going to be trying to make them better, trying to improve on them. And the only way you do that is getting positive feedback. So, you know, just because we have these ordinances out there doesn't mean that they can't be looked at, they can't be made better, and we do that by talking to each other. That's how it works. So, just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Your employees all have their way figured around.
Yep.
Nobody got lost, huh?
Nope.
IT, Don Bolson. We have a NITCO. This is an agreement to provide underground fiber locating services. And I believe this is the contract that would put fiber between this building and the, nope. Benny's already shaking his head no. Or then you tell me.
This is, this is, we've never had a locator service for any of our underground fiber runs. This will be a contract to let NITCO be our locator. If someone calls 811, NITCO will be notified, they will come out and mark all our underground fiber force. So they don't get cut, that's what it's for.
Okay.
Three-year contract, $3,000 a year. To $3,000 is the annual fee. We would only receive a bill if we exceed that in a calendar year.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an agreement to provide underground fiber locating services to NITCO. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
A couple of updates for the commissioners. The fiber between the courthouse and the admin center is finished.
I was a little ahead of myself.
Yeah.
Behind me.
Their part is finished. We're getting ready to order a couple of switches and some G-bex, so we can start doing some testing between the two buildings before we switch, switch over. I think we should be ready to go by the end of the month, way to switch the courthouse.
Yeah, real quick, what's the purpose of replacing that or purchasing?
Putting it in.
Yeah. You know, what enhancement is that going to be at all?
It's twofold. The biggest enhancement will be bandwidth. We're going to, it'll be about 53 times faster than what we currently have on the wireless. The wireless has been there, I was going to look that up, probably five or six years now. We've never had an issue with it, but the radio system is getting old. And once it proves itself, we'll be able to take some, a couple of those dishes off the top of the buildings, too, and make it look a little bit better. And as a side note, we had talked in the past about running a fiber between the juvenile center and the admin center. NITCO has reduced the price of that by $5,000, so we're down to $31,000 for our part. So maybe that's something we need to talk about next year, and we can eliminate the rest of those dishes on top of the buildings. Second thing, we had a kickoff meeting yesterday with the IT audit folks. It went real well. We have another meeting scheduled for Thursday. They're planning on being onsite next week, so that's, that's moving along pretty good. The last thing I had was the time clock. We've got our three servers all set up, the IT department has. The folks that write stuff have logged in. They've got most of their stuff installed on the servers, and we should be on schedule for the training, which is next week, the supervisor training.
That's coming right around the corner, too.
Yep. Everything's coming up.
Thank you, Don. Looking forward to that audit, see what we can find out in there, see how we can make that better. Next, Andy McKay, Highway Department. Hi, Andy. You got a request to transfer funds. This is Fund 1176 Motor Vehicle Highway in the amount of $10,000 from Account 2470 Calcium Chloride to Account 2320 Auto Truck and Equipment for Vehicle Repairs and Parts.
There's also a second one, too.
Who's that?
There was one for a transfer from 37100 to 3650 also.
Okay, let me pull that up. There's two on the transfer of funds.
Yeah, they look very similar.
I don't have a.
Do you have it on there?
Yeah.
You can come up, unless I'm looking at it in the wrong place. Can we do both at the same time or separate? So then, we have another additional?
No, transfer.
Transfer. Both transfers.
Oh, these are both?
They're both transfers.
Yep. We have another transfer from 1176 in the amount of $10,002.
Vehicle repair.
For vehicle repair, which is 36500.
Yep.
In the same amount of $10,000.
Yes.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve two transfers, each in the amount of $10,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Andy. What do you got going on, finishing up paving and?
Today, they're paving Mandarin Road, and then they're going to go down to 250, and hopefully by the end of the week, we are done paving.
Oh, okay.
We're doing a couple more bridge decks Friday morning.
Oh, okay.
So we should be done paving. And then, striping list is given to engineering this morning, so hopefully we'll get them all striped.
Okay.
You had also, you had communicated a week ago or so, you're going to have rumble strips put on 875 North approaching the intersection of 875 North and Laclel Road.
Correct.
When are they going to be?
The striker that does the, striping is actually going to put them down. So they'll be finished when they finish that also.
Okay.
It's the same contractor.
Yeah, I went out there and talked to the owners of Robinhurst Golf Course.
Oh, yeah.
And asked them if they'd noticed any difference, and they said, yes, they have actually. That the vehicles are slowing down as they're going past the golf course approaching the intersection. He thinks it's, and he's a former engineer himself. He says because of the visual.
You can definitely see them.
Yeah, so.
Good.
Good.
Thanks, Andy.
Yep.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Next up, Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson, Director. Morning, Bob.
Good morning.
There it is. I was in the wrong place. All right. So what we have here is a renewal, renewal of an IDOT agreement for Calumet Trail. Why don't you take us through it, Bob?
The original agreement was signed in 2013. We were hoping to have this project let about two years ago. But when we heard that NITCO was going to be coming in and doing a gas line through there, I held up on this and said, no, I'm not building a construction road for the NITCO. So, IDOT has asked us to renew this particular agreement. It is for construction of the trail from Will, no, Will Springs Road, excuse me, to what would be approximately the old TruMont Road extended.
And these funds are still available?
As far as I know, RDA is doing the match. It's going through the Town of Porter for $400,000. The actual construction agreement, federal $1.6 million, local $400,000 for $2 million construction project. Next concern on that is now is NICD's double tracking that's going to be coming up, because I have had to run NICD off the Calumet Trail before using the trail as a staging ground for their raised platform at the Dunes, Dunland Station. So I mean, that is another concern, though. If we get construction going, I got to make sure that NICD understands that this is not a staging road.
Do you have, do you have a timing of this right now, or is this, is this just to keep the money?
This is to keep the money. Money in place. IDOT is well aware of why this is being delayed with this. We're hoping that once NITCO is out of there with their pipeline project, that we can then go forward with the actual construction letting.
Are you reaching out to NICD on this?
Yes, because, because of the double tracking, we're having to move the trail in a certain location, underneath the Staver 49 Bridge. They are having to move to the north underneath a particular set of piers. And where the trail was originally proposed, it was too close to the rail line. So, they're, they approached us about moving the trail to the north, and I said, hey, I got no problem with that, but you're going to have to talk to IDOT because it's their bridge. What they're going to do is, the embankment wall that's coming down, they're going to put in a permanent wall in that situation and move the trail a little bit north behind some additional piers.
So, it'll be worked out?
Yes.
Any other questions for the board?
Trail's closed there now.
Trail is currently closed because of the NITCO gas line construction.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to renew an IDOT agreement for the Calumet Trail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have IDOT Railroad Grade Crossing Fund Grant Agreement in the amount of $40,000. This grant does not have a match, so it is 100% funded from IDOT.
Yes, this is through the IDOT Railroad Division, and there was a grant that came up. We applied for it. It's $40,000, and it's for the purposes of striping the warning of the railroad crossing symbol that's in the roads before you approach the actual crossing. It's, it's for the warnings, stripings on that. We are, we did an inventory of it this summer with the engineering, and we're trying to prioritize which ones need to go and be done here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for IDOT Railroad Crossing Fund Grant Agreement in the amount of $40,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And last but not least, you're going to do a presentation.
I am.
So Mike, you have the floor.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll step over here so I can kind of talk to the crowd as well. Good morning, I'm Mike Novatny, a county engineer in the Department of Development Stormwater Management. And what I wanted to present to the commissioners and to the audience as well this morning are sort of the results of our 2017 Summer Intern Work Program. We had eight interns this summer, which I was happy if we would have got two or three, but we managed to get eight. So we had two teams of two going out and collecting storm, a lot of information on our stormwater infrastructure across the county. And I think to be effective stormwater managers, we've got to have a good handle on where that infrastructure's at, what a kind of condition it's in, and then what kind of repair replacement needs we actually have out there. So, before we got started, we had to set up some assessment protocols. We did three different assessments. My goal was to finish the culverts and storm sewer structures assessment, which is culverts crossing under the roadway, roadways, as well as curb inlets, catch basins, and the like throughout the, throughout the subdivisions throughout the county. The interns were really fast and efficient this summer, so we managed to move on to the stream assessment as well. And that involved actually getting out and walking the streams. And they would do a one mile to one and a half mile reach at a time. So they would do an overall characterization of the reach, and then it'd also pick up individual points along the way. Outfalls, additional culverts that they didn't catch while they were in the right of way, and also areas of significant erosion and significant blockages. They tired of that stream assessment pretty quick, and it was not, you know, 90 degrees humidity, and they're walking through muck and mire in our regulated drains. So we did some detention basin work, and they kind of finished their summer with that. And they got out to 155 detention basins and looked at the basin as a whole. And then, as with the stream assessment, kind of looked at individual points within that basin. So inlets and outlet structures, and then noted areas of significant erosion, blockages, debris, bever activity, down trees, things like that, as well as areas where we've got significant invasive vegetation, cattails, and phragmities particularly. We developed those assessments in-house, and the goal was to develop a very rapid assessment, so our interns could get out there, drop a point on a map, and then very quickly get through the assessment. Give us some indication of there's a fair, good, or poor condition, and note any abnormalities and problems in that, in those structures or in those detention basins or streams. Kurt, if you would. So we didn't just make stuff up, sometimes we have to, but we relied on a number of very valuable references, materials developed by the Center for Watershed Protection out in the East Coast, a nonprofit that sort of specializes in providing MS4 communities like us with useful tools that we need to get the job done. And then looked at some other things that Departments of Transportation had developed, other assessment methods, as well as US EPA's Pond and Wetland Management Guidebook for, for our detention basin assessment. So with all that information in mind, and I kind of crunched everything together and spit some stuff out. So if you would, Kurt, this is kind of what I came up with for the reach, stream reach assessment. And it's supposed to be small, and maybe your eyes heard after looking at it. But the point being, we collected a lot of information, but set it up in a way our interns could collect it quickly. You know, with each curb inlet or structure, the goal was to get them in and out in about 10 minutes per structure, so they could quickly make their way through the county. But this is giving some idea of the depth of information and type of information we collected. And the idea being that rather than have a checklist that looked like this, and that the interns would have to fill out repetitively, stop after stop, we integrated our data collection efforts with GIS and handheld computers.
That's what I was going to, I was, I was going to have you explain the technology that we used.
Absolutely.
And the other thing that I just wanted to butt in a little bit here is that the eight interns that we had were all engineering students. They were from Roseholman, VU, Notre Dame, Purdue, and so, these were engineering students. So they knew, and then we coupled them with the latest technology, and that's how we were able to get these points, so. Sorry, I.
No, that's, they're big points. Jump ahead of me a little bit, I want to give some recognition to them as well. But we'll talk about, you know, who they were and what, because they did a lot of work for us this summer, obviously. So, Kurt, if you would, just forward it one more. So rather than, like I said, rather than relying on paper forms, which, when I was starting my career, it was a lot of this. Paper forms, then you'd have to go back to the office and insert that information into a database so that you could integrate it into GIS. We're at a point, you know, 15 years from after when I started my career, and technology isn't a We're at a point, you know, 15 years from after when I started my career and technology is in a lot better place. So we relied on handheld tablet computers, wireless connections so that in real time, our interns could go out in the field, use our tablet computers with an internet connection, drop a point on a map, fill out the form, and then we could actually see that information pop up on our desktop five minutes or so after they completed that assessment. So we could track how they were doing. If they had questions, they could call us and say, hey, I've got an issue here. And in real time, I could kind of see and zoom in on where they were at and see what they were doing. So I want to turn it over to Kerry just for a couple of minutes to talk about the technology because I think it's a beautiful blend of information and technology.
Hey guys, so he gave me that huge list of information that he wanted collected. And I basically created a database that involved fields and domain values. So the students didn't really have to think while they were out in the field. They could just sit there and basically push a button and a dropdown would show up with all the values that they would need for whatever data they were collecting at the time. This is the tablets that they used. If any of you want to come take a closer look, you can. But they basically would just put a point and then go through the series of dropdowns, filling out whatever information and then in real time, it would come back to Mike or I and we would be able to see exactly what it was. They could also attach photos. So while they were out there, they could take a photo of the structure or stream, whatever they were assessing at that exact moment. And we used ArcGIS is what we use in-house and they have something called ArcGIS Online and that's where you upload your maps. And then this is all connected through this and I have a jet pack in my pocket. So this is basically just a little wifi signal so that while they're in the middle of a field, they could actually send it via wifi and cell signal. So yeah, and it was really easy. It takes a lot to set up, but once it's set up, they could just go through and they got a lot more done than we thought they could. And it's a pretty useful tool for any department really, but for ours in general.
Yeah, and I think to emphasize the efficiency, I assumed it would take them all summer to get through the culverts and storm drain structures. They did, they were done by the 4th of July. And I attribute that, one, to the technology, but also that they were really hard workers as well. I mean, they enjoyed being out there, I think. But the technology really, I mean, really allowed us to get a lot more done this summer than I thought we'd be able to. And we shared some of this information with other MS4 communities at a recent meeting. So get some conversation going on at the regional level. We've just kind of taken tools that have been used in various forms and fashions and just kind of putting everything together, I think, and do a nice, concise package that can be transferred.
Is this the first time that your office attempted to use this type of technology out in the field?
We've been using, we've been using the ArcGIS Collector staff has, and it responds to drainage complaints. It's sort of a reused functionality, but I have it on my smartphone. So when I go out and respond to a drainage complaint, I can drop a point on a map, take a picture, take my notes and then when I get back to the office.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it's, I also have it on my smartphone with bridges. I go out to a bridge, I do an inspection, I can date it, I can take pictures of the bridge and dump it right in and boom, Kerry can pull it all up.
Quite a bit different than what they were doing 10 years ago, isn't it Bob?
Yeah, we did this program better than 15 years ago when I was down at Highway Engineering. And I'd like to put in that during my time, it was paper and more paper.
All right Kurt, if you would.
So again, the stream's kind of small, but that just gives you some idea of what we see on the desktop. And you can change the base map to reflect aerial photography or topography or streets. So you can change how it looks, but the data, those points is what we're, is the data we've collected, the interns have collected this summer. So rather than just sending them out and letting them bootstrap on their own, of course, we provided them with some training on each of the assessment protocols. There's some various shots going on, but the idea that, hey, we're working together, we want to talk about when something's in bad condition, when something's in good condition, what are we actually looking for out there? Because as I told the interns throughout the summer, you know, learning in school, you're going to learn a lot of very important stuff, a lot of fundamentals, but then when you get out in the field, it's somewhat of a challenge sometimes to transfer that into the real world. So we tried to, tried to make the most of this summer for the interns. We got a lot of work out of them, but we tried to give them a lot of real world, on the ground information. And not just through this training, but we showed them what we do during the plan review process and how we evaluate plans for consistency with our county standards. We kind of walked through an entire capital improvement project this summer. They got to see it from my initial concepts through final design, through it actually being built this summer and seeing the excavators actually digging trenches and then putting storm sewer in the ground. So I think we gave quite a bit back to them as well. So the results, we collected a lot of data. 1,200 or so culverts inventoried and assessed, 2,600 or so storm sewer structures inventoried and assessed, 10 and a half miles of stream reaches inventoried and assessed. And that includes points along the way that were culverts, outfalls, erosion, blockages, things like that. And then like I mentioned earlier, 155 detention basins as well. So what does that all mean? And I've got maps up here that kind of show those dots on the map, but what does that data all mean? And it's not necessarily meaningful unless we use it. So right now, we've got one intern still working with us that's scrubbing the data, cleaning it up. We're going to get that on the website so that the public can see that data that we did collect. In-house, we're going to use it in a lot of different ways. And I've just listed some of them up here for the presentation. We identified 200 or so culverts and storm sewer structures that are really in need of kind of immediate attention, repair, replacement. They had structural deficiencies. Culvert might be rusting away if it's corrugated metal pipe. So we're working on getting those replacements done. There's 550 or so more with some sort of structural damage or issue that would sort of be on the early action plan. So thinking about a five-year plan, those would be the ones we want to hit during the first year or two. Beyond that, it's going to inform the development of a maintenance plan for our culvert and storm sewer structures. So we've been talking for some time now as an MS4 about a proactive catch basin cleanout and culvert jetting program. Well, this gives us the data to help inform that program. How bad, we looked for sediment accumulation and debris accumulation in all these structures. So this tells us how many are really in, have accumulated a lot of debris, how many are really in pretty good shape in terms of debris accumulation and then we can sort of program from there. It helps us meet our MS4 program requirements with regards to storm sewer, outfall, inspection and inventory. So we picked up some new outfalls that we didn't know about before. And while they were out there, the interns looked for evidence of illicit or illegal discharges. Basically non-stormwater stuff coming out of the storm sewer system. Like with our culverts and storm drains, our stream reach assessment, one of my goals, one of the department's goals is to get a much better overall assessment of the condition of all our regulated drainage infrastructure. And we've got like 400 miles of regulated drains in the county. So the stream assessment helped us do that. I think they tired out pretty quick and showed us that maybe we've got to go a little different route and use some different technology to do our stream, overall stream assessment. But the idea being, hey, we want to get an idea of overall which of these streams are in worst condition, which are in pretty good condition and then in terms of programming, hit those streams that are in the worst condition first. Informs our detention basin inspection and maintenance program. We're starting back up our vegetation management work here this fall on our detention basins. So that tells us, that detention basin assessment helped tell us where invasive species were proliferating or where we have erosion and other issues that we need to take care of in our detention basins. And there's probably, you know, 10 or 12 more applications that I could rattle off. But I think the important thing is to be good managers, you've got to have the data inform your management program. And this summer, we went a long way to collect that data. Now it's, our job is to use it, put it into our programming and continue to build this stormwater program. So all that stuff's fun and good, but I think all the staff really enjoyed working with the interns this summer. They were an extremely hardworking group of kids. Some of the feedback that we got was, hey, this was some of my favorite engineering experience so far. You know, we're starting to see translating the book knowledge into real world knowledge. They were all glad to be a part of the program. And I think they pointed out, the nice thing was seeing the plan review process, seeing some of these capital improvement projects being built and seeing how things happen in the real world. Believe it or not, the most common criticism from the group was that they wish they would have been busier. And part of that was we didn't expect, I didn't expect them to get as much done as they did. So we had a little bit of downtime to build our next assessment and do the training on it and get them going into the next phase. But they were a very hardworking group. So I wanted to recognize them here with this last slide. As Jeff mentioned, you know, they kind of came from all over the state. They're all engineering students at various points in their educational career. We had four from working in the stormwater department, Paul, Hannah, Tanya and Macy. Two transportation interns who did very similar work, but on our roads and rights of way. So they were looking at our pavement and pavement management system, updating that data, looking at bridges and minor structures along the way as well. And then we had two GIS interns, Reed and Grace, who were busy scanning plans, feeding data into our GIS system so that all that information that we've got in hard copy format is more available with push of a button from your desktop. So with that, I'd entertain any questions from, from the board.
Do you see us enhancing this program moving forward?
I see, yeah, I mean, I definitely see a continuation of this program. One, I know there's some areas where we didn't fully hit, particularly with the stream assessment work. Detention basin, there's some more data I think we need to collect and then some subdivisions that we didn't quite get to. And I see some improvements maybe in the data collection, but I see probably not necessarily the need for like eight interns. But you know, maybe two on the stormwater side, two on the transportation side to give us updates every summer and go out and get more information, maybe help us with drainage complaints and things like that.
The transportation section, that data collected goes into our Pazer. And we are supposed, we're required by INDOT to do that every two years. I guess our goal was probably going to be looking more at yearly.
Just so we can use it.
Correct.
Other than INDOT.
So we can use it as an assessment for the following years.
Yeah, one of the other things that, speaking of technology, back to technology, this board acted at the last meeting to where we're going to be purchasing a drone. And the stream assessments that we're looking at, a lot of people in this county, you know, we have 830 miles of road in unincorporated Porter County. So you can imagine the amount of miles of ditches we have down south and throughout the entire county. And wading through these streams, miles and miles, trying to figure out what's going wrong, blockages, whatever. With, with, with the drone now, we're going to be able to assess these waterways. We'll also be able to use it for some of our building stuff and other things. So that's one more part of technology sort of taking over the day. And we're going to be moving to that. And that's another tool that we can use to assess our streams and assess a lot of other things from different. You can, you can take a drone and go under a bridge to where you can't get to it because you can't wait out under a railroad bridge or something. So there's going to be a lot of applications for this. And the other thing I'd like to point out too, you've heard the whole common thread about GIS. Everything that we're downloading, GIS is something that most citizens can access now through the county website. And what happens now is all this data that we're collecting is going to get loaded onto GIS. So as a constituent of Porter County, if you have a certain thing on your road and you want to go check it out, you'll be able to, we'll be able to have structures on there, we'll be able to have a lot of things on there to where we can have more information readily available to the taxpayers if they need to know stuff. So all of our collection of data and this whole movement is trying to come up with a more robust GIS system that not just the people in the county can use, but other municipalities, people from a long ways away can pull it up and look at certain things. If you own property here in Porter County, but you live in Florida, you know, this is more towards that connection and that mobility of trying to get that information and get it out there to where everybody can use it. And that's transparency and disclosure is what that is too. So it's a big step, it's a big movement and it's definitely going in the right direction for a year and a half. This department's only been up and running for a year and a half. And so we've got a lot of things going on and it's exciting. So thank you for the presentation. I know it was, it was well deserved and we got a lot of information our first year, a lot of information, so.
Well, thanks for letting me stormwater geek out for a little bit.
Thanks Mike. Thanks Bob for everything the department's doing too, so. Next on the agenda, we have Porter County Substance Abuse Council, Don Pelk, Executive Director. This is a request for approval of grant funding allocation. Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing? You have the floor. Go ahead and tell us what you got.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
We are here, this is Brad Campbell, he's a member of our Board of Directors. And we're here to ask for the Commissioner's approval of the local coordinating council's funds from the countermeasure fees. For the designated agencies that were approved by the Grant Selection Committee.
Explain where the money comes from.
Oh, where does the money come from? The money comes from money that is collected through countermeasure fees from the courts. And they're put into a fund with the auditor and then they build over the year. And then the money in the fund, we grant fund back out into the community.
Okay. How much is in that fund now, do you know?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve a request approval for the grant funding allocations for the Porter County Substance Abuse Council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Teresa Biggs. We have a request to hold a Rosalie Rally on the Northwest Corner of the Courthouse Grounds on Saturday, October 14th, 2017 at noon. The rally will last, will last 30 to 45 minutes and they will be praying for world peace and for our country. And you have the floor. Do you have, like, anything you'd like to add to that?
There's not much to add, we just want to pray for peace. I mean, I think our country needs it.
Timing on this could be better.
World needs it.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve Rosalie Rally at the Northeast Corner of the Courthouse Grounds on October 14th at noon for 40, up to 45 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, I hope you have good weather out there.
I do too, thank you.
So with that said, we're at the end of the agenda. If there's anybody that wishes to address this council or this board, you're more than free to come up. Please, if you do, state your name, address, phone number. And having done, this board stands in recess.